Okay, the time is seven oh nine. And at this time, we'd like to have a report out of closed session.
In closed session, the Board of Education took action to terminate employee number one eight three nine nine two five, effective January eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and providing all the required notices. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education denied a request for an extension of the leave of absence for classified employee number one three nine two nine two five. And the last one, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Angela Brantley as Senior Director of Student Services, effective January eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and the vote was unanimous.
Thank you. We didn't get all of our closed session items worked on tonight, so we will have to be going back in for a few minutes afterwards to finish that. So at this time, I'd like a motion to adjourn closed session. No, actually, we'll adjourn afterwards, right? So at this time, no, we have to adjourn and then go back.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, motion passes. Onto open session, and the time is seven eleven.
Oh, thank heaven.
At this time, we'd like to ask Marisol, our student board member, Angolo, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Angela. I mean, Marisol. Okay, so next, we have the adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Okay, do we have a first and a second? Do we have a discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Okay.
I have agenda approval and consent item.
Alrighty.
Consent item G four.
I also have some goals.
G four.
I have G three and G four and K two.
You'd like to discuss, you guys would like to pull these and discuss them?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to wait until we get to the-
We have to move to approve them and then discuss them.
Right, so can we, can we pull these when we get to the consent calendar items and approve the agenda as is?
Yes.
Yeah. So, all in favor of approving the agenda as is?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tonight, there's no presentations, so we'll immediately go into public comments. We'll start with comments, comments not on the agenda for tonight. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. And first, we have Mrs. Linda Silva.
I have a really bad voice, so I'm gonna try and get it across as best I can. Good evening, Board members, administration, staff and community. My name is Linda Silva and tonight I stand before you as President of C S C A Chapter two oh three. At the last board meeting, I was C pro of our chapter, and I wanted so badly to write an article in our newsletter about the comments and behaviors of that meeting. However, as a professional classified employee in our district, I found that it would reflect a behavior similar to that that was displayed at that meeting. C S C A Chapter two oh three members are very passionate about our fellow coworkers, and to have it implied that we have staff members in positions that aren't professional hit hard to our core. I am speaking to the comments by the community and even our own board members, who stated that we needed to hire professional translators and interpreters. What was most upsetting event of the meeting was that the board didn't stop the rude and inappropriate behavior at the podium by community members, nor did you support the classified staff of your district. Let me ask you this, do you know how many translators, interpreters our district has? Do you know the extreme hiring process that each one of them must go through to get hired into our district? Basically, looking at you now, I would have to say that you don't, so let me be professional and assist you. A regular classified staff member must pass both a skills test and a written test in order to be considered for, let's just say, a clerical position in our district. Then we have a bilingual, our bilingual clerical staff must pass the previously stated tests, and in addition, a test of their secondary language abilities. Moving on, let's look at the translator interpreter position. Anyone applying for those positions must pass not one, not two, but three written tests to verify their abilities and professionalism. At this point, I would like to say that there isn't one classified staff member, regardless of their job title, who isn't professional in their job. Professional classified staff get the job done. They're reliable and they keep their promises. If circumstances arise that prevent them from delivering on their promises, they manage expectations up front, and they do their best to make the situation right. Professionals don't make excuses, but instead focus on finding solutions. But even more than this, true professionals are humble. If a project or job falls outside their scope of expertise, they're not afraid to admit this. They immediately ask to help when they need it, and they're willing to learn from others. If you feel that our district could use more translators and interpreters because of the workloads, then ask the superintendent to hire more staff because we have a shortage, not because you feel that we are not professional. And if you feel that our translators, interpreters need training, then ask the superintendent to provide what you feel is necessary training. Don't imply that they are not professionals. I am going to ask you now to please be professional in your field, choose your words wisely, and by all means, support your professional classified staff. One final thing, is the C S C A mission is to improve the lives of our members, students and community, and this mission is fulfilled daily through the professionalism of our members.
Thank you, Mrs. Silva. Up next, we have Mr. Russell Silva.
Good evening, Board members, administration and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva. I'm here to address an issue that has been abused for a long time with this district, probably longer than before I was here, and that's the three-minute time limit for public comments. Under the Brown Act, the school board is allowed to limit the amount of time that each person, single individuals, allow the opportunity to speak during public comments. The President of the Board also even identifies this limitation before the public comments happen. But yet, the public continually abuses this privilege, and even the Board has gone so far as to even grant more time to people, in particular, certain, certain individuals. In one instance, during a meeting of last year, many concerned parents spoke out against the management of, the mismanagement of the Special Education Department with regards to their students, and the Board allowed sometimes up to eight and ten minutes for each individual to speak. But during the time when I came up for my public comments, I was interrupted at the one-minute limit with the then-acting President Joe Ayala, asking me if I was going to complete my comments within the three-minute time limit. I felt slighted and, to a certain degree, prejudiced against. During the horrific writing assignment of last year, Neil Falco was allowed to numerous occasions to come up and ramble on and on and on with no end in sight, and nothing was done. And he's an attorney, and he should know better. If he was to address a three-judge appellate court, by the time that light goes off, he's supposed to stop saying what he's doing, even if it's in the middle of an argument, thank them for their time and sit down. This Board deserves no less the respect for the public, and it's time that you guys stand up and expect to get that respect. I understand the compassion, I understand that I'm compassionate to those individuals who speak different languages and need interpreters, but they do need to have a limit. I suggest maybe six, three minutes for the person to speak and three minutes for the interpreter. Under the Brown Act, members are allowed to speak and ask questions to individuals during the public comment section, but only insofar as to get additional information, only on information that has never been brought before the Board. So that too has limitations on how you can communicate. Every time I get up and speak to this Board, I plan out what I'm gonna say. I write it out, and then I read it aloud with a timer to make sure I stay within my three-minute time limit. I'm not always perfect at doing this, I've gone over a few seconds from time to time, but never by minutes. People that come to this podium need to be respectful, not just to the school board, but to the administration that attends these meetings and the public that watches it. It's not a difficult thing to do. I've been able to get up here and say everything I have to do, and I still have fifteen seconds left in the clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell Silva. Next up, we have Mr. Ron Fletcher.
Good evening, Board, President Montez, the public here. I can only say that after following him, it's difficult, very difficult. I really liked what he did. I am looking forward to attending most of the Board meetings this year, and I'm looking forward to seeing how much, Montez and Kelly and now it's Diane, Dina Walker, how much you grow, because this district has gone through an awful lot. Now, we had last year, one time, asked for you to have on your agenda a place where the unions could come up for a couple of minutes and talk. Now, I can tell you right now, from my experience, we're not gonna be talking every time, but that would give us an opportunity to get here, maybe even a little bit late, and know that we have a chance to be able to talk to you. I'm really looking forward to seeing what this district does. I'm looking forward to seeing what you do with Cal State and your program there, and what you do with Middle College, because that's a great program. So, I know that you're hiring very good people from San Bernardino. I hope that stops, but that's my personal opinion. Anyway, Happy New Year to you, and we will talk to you later.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, and we'll definitely take your suggestion into consideration to bring back that item for the unions. I didn't have a problem with it. I don't know why it was taken off, but it's not a problem bringing it back on. Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Deb McKenzie.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and viewing audience. My name is Deb McKenzie, and I'm a teacher in Rialto Unified School District. I have been asked tonight by colleagues to come and talk to the Board of Education about the elementary sports program. Since August, when we started school, they were talking about doing an elementary sports program. Football season went by, nothing happened. It's the middle of basketball season, nothing has happened. We have track and soccer, don't know if we're gonna have teams or not. The kids have been looking forward to participating on the sports teams. The parents have been expecting their children to participate and looking forward to coming and watching them. Nothing's happened. Many of the parents are upset because they don't sign their kids up for the recreational sports programs, because they expect them to be in the school programs, and trying to be on two teams at once is difficult. So when the elementary sports program isn't set up and running, and they haven't signed up for the recreational ones, the kids do not get to participate in the sports that they like. The sports program, I understand, has had problems, but I really think either you need to go ahead, get it set up and running and fund it, or just unilaterally say, there is no more sports program for this year, work on it for next year, so that in August of next year, the program is up and running from the beginning. But it's not fair to our students to keep saying, oh, there's gonna be sports, and then there isn't. It's not fair to the parents, it's not even fair to the staff that volunteer their time and schedule things accordingly so they have the free time to do it, and then there's no program. So, what they have asked me to ask the Board is, make a decision, yea or nay, and stick with it for the rest of the year so that they're not left hanging. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. Up next, we have Mr. Joe Baca Junior.
Thank you, Honorable President. Happy New Year to all of you, and Happy New Year to everybody in the audience, in the viewing audience. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Joe Baca Junior, City Councilman, and also teacher at Rialto High School and softball coach, and I'm here to make a public announcement. One of the things that, you know, our family has been very passionate about is giving back to the community, and one of the things we've been offering for the last nine years is free baseball clinic. And just want to announce to the public that this Saturday, the Joe Baca Foundation will be having a free baseball clinic from nine AM to twelve PM at the Sixty-Sixer Stadium in San Bernardino. Registration starts at eight AM. And just to let you know what we do at the clinic, we provide, you know, fitness opportunities, we provide, you know, fundamentals of baseball, it's good team building, and most of all, it's free, free, free. And what we provide for the kids is free T-shirts, we got McDonald's that's gonna be feeding them, we have Bernie the mascot, Ronald McDonald's gonna make appearance, we have a lot of future prospects that are going to play professional ball this season, that are gonna come out and volunteer their time for the kids, but it's our way of giving back, and it's free of charge, and we just want to invite the Rialto community, we've got a lot of R S V Ps already, and, you know, just want to make ourselves available to the people, and it's gonna be a fun event, and it's free, and just remember that, and we have a lot of autograph prizes. I collect a lot of autographs throughout the year, we're gonna be giving them out to the kids, so it's just our opportunity to give back to the community, and just want to let the public know and the Rialto School District know, and hopefully, a lot of your kids can come. It's from ages seven to thirteen at San Manuel Stadium, home of the Alien Empire Sixty-Sixers, and they've been gracious enough to give us their facility for nothing. So it's been a great event, and just want to invite all of you, and thank you for the opportunity to announce this to the public. Thank you.
Would you like to give a phone number or a website if anyone would like to R S V P?
Yeah, absolutely. The phone number is nine oh nine, area code nine oh nine, two seven five, five four four four, area code nine oh nine, two seven five, five four four four, and you can follow us on Facebook, joebacafoundation.com, or www.joebacafoundation.com, and it's a great event, and we'll have a lot of good prizes for everybody and a fun-filled event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baca Junior. By the way, some people are here to support the stadium, I'm in support of the stadium. Before, before we go on to items on the agenda, I just would like to recognize our former student board member, Micah. Could you say hello, Mike? Saint Andrew, correct?
That's right.
Would you like to say a word?
Go ahead, tell us what you've been up to.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity, President. It's been a while since I've been up here. I'm a little nervous right now. Didn't expect to speak, but since I'm up here, I just want to say I'm glad to be here again. I'm on my break. Football season was great, Fresno State, and-
How are your grades?
Grades are great. Yes, yes, grades are great. And what else? Anybody have any questions for me? Okay, well, thank you guys for the opportunity. I'm in support of the stadium, that's another reason I'm here, so, thank you.
And we want to thank also Micah's mother for joining him here tonight. Thank you, Miss Saint Andrew. Thank you, Micah, for coming back and visiting us, it's good to see you. So now we'll go on to items on the agenda, and first, we'll have Mr. Russell Silva. Is that for me?
No, that's you.
No, I put mine on vibrate, it can't be.
I'm not ringing.
We apologize, Mr. Silva, give us one second here. Okay, take it away.
Good evening, Board members, administration and viewing audience. My name's Russell Silva. I'm here to discuss reference item K two point one, here for approval on today's agenda. On the October twenty-second meeting of last year, this Board approved the ratification of an agreement to the Law Office for Gonzales, Fierro and Eckerson to review the supporting documentation for the financial fiscal audit that was done last year. I understand the purpose of the review is to determine whether or not the district has legal foundation to recover funds that were wrongfully played to contract or agreements. The original agreement with Mr. Gutierrez was for ten hours, but this amendment is to add eighty-eight hours to the original agreement, which is eight hundred and eighty percent increase. I warned the Board last October that this would happen, but only Board Member Joe Martinez, who voted no for the ratification, heard my plea. I asked the Board members then, why weren't the district's attorneys of record, Mr. Christopher Keeler from Fagan, Thiedler and Full Frost, perform the review? And I was told by Mr., then Board Member Edgar Martinez, that they were too busy to do it. I talked with Mr. Keeler, and he said that they have over sixty attorneys on staff, seventy-one to be exact, I looked it up, and I would have to think with that many lawyers, they have a very extensive paralegal and other assistance that they can support, that they can fall back on. Gutierrez, Fierro and Eckerson only have three attorneys on staff. If the analysis determined by them will allow the district to recover some funds, who's going to be the district's mitigator or litigator? Is it going, I'm assuming it's going to be Mr. Gonzales, because he's doing the research, but I must warn the district about this. When their contract, when their five-year contract with the city of Rialto was expiring, instead of renewing it, the city went out to competitive bid, and the reasons for that was because their complaint was that Mr. Gutierrez's retainer was excessively high, that he overbilled on many situations, and when released by the city, they had twelve current cases under litigation that, according to the city, could have been settled by then. So now I ask the district, are we going to throw money, like a hundred thousand dollars or more, into legal analysis and litigation to recover fifty thousand dollars of money? Not a wise use of district funds. I would rather buy books or computers. I made this statement in October, and I'll say it again, when is the district going to stop being a cash cow for consultant firms or friends of friends looking for easy money? Because if it continues, the game hasn't changed from when the former superintendent was here, we just have different players. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Up next, we have Mr. Mike Clark.
Thank you, everyone in attendance, Board members, for having the three minutes for us to speak. I am here because I'm the head football coach at Eisenhower High School, so of course, I am for the stadium. We have a lot of, lot of tradition at Eisenhower, I have a little story about how much tradition. When I was, I was on my way to Ryan Clady's draft party, who now plays for the Denver Broncos, and a reporter from Idaho called me to see if I would report to him from the draft party, because the draft party was being held in LA, and he wanted full reports because they're very excited about it, about it being Boise State's first, first-round draft pick. And he asked me how excited I was to have a first-round draft pick at Eisenhower, and I said, well, I'm very excited, as we all are, but it was our third first-round draft pick. So here's a university who had already played in the Fiesta Bowl and beat Oklahoma in the magnificent game I'm sure a lot of you have seen, and yet, it was their first first-round pick while it was our third. So we have longstanding tradition. Eisenhower High School football is why Rialto, California is on the map. The Eisenhower High School area is the heart of the city of Rialto. You know, the students in the Eisenhower area should not have to drive ten minutes north or ten minutes south to have adequate facilities. We should have the facilities right here in our area, so that they can come and play in a stadium that's worthy of the tradition of Eisenhower High School. We should have the facilities to compete like the other schools have, we should have an adequate weight room. Right now, we have a very tiny, basically, a storage room as a weight room. We have, our team room can barely hold thirty people, we're trying to put sixty in there. We need a new facility, we need not just the turf and all that, but we need the team room, we need the weight room. You know, the city deserves it, the area deserves it. The Eisenhower High School area is the heartbeat of Rialto, and they shouldn't have lesser facilities just because of their address. We should have the same facilities that the other schools have right here in the heart of Rialto. Thank you.
Mike, you will get that stadium. And a performing arts building.
Thank you, Mr. Mike Clark. Up next, Mr. Keith Bailey.
School Board members, Acting Superintendent Mr. Hallison, parents, students and guests, thank you for me, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. It's gratifying to stand here in front of old friends, ex-students, colleagues and allies with whom I have worked over the past years. My name is Keith Bailey. I retired after teaching thirty-four years at Eisenhower High School here in the Rialto Unified School District. I also coached generally every sport at Ike, and still coaching. I am also still substitute teaching because of my love for the students and my love for my job. All three of my children attended Eisenhower High School. As you might ascertain, my love for Eisenhower runs deep. I've been a resident of Rialto for over thirty years, and I am a registered voter here. My first full year of teaching began in nineteen seventy-six. Our home field was the Orange Soul Stadium back in those days. I was lucky enough to be coaching football at the time when Ronnie Lott was playing at Ike. Due to the success of Ronnie and the teams he played with, Eisenhower became the best show in town. The community, school district and student body got behind the idea of building a new stadium. In nineteen seventy-eight, with funds from the district and sale of candy from the student body, Eisenhower had its own stadium, its own field at home for the first time. Again, that was nineteen seventy-eight, thirty-seven years ago. Now Eisenhower is in need of a new stadium again. As I pass by the corner of Baseline and Willow, I look at the renderings on the billboards which herald the new stadium that Eisenhower was supposed to have gotten. Rialto and Carter High Schools have their new stadiums. Now I realize that all they needed were new fields because other facilities were already present. I also realize that Measure Y, passed by the voters of Rialto in two thousand and ten to procure the funds for a new stadium, also included upgrades for other things in the district. Air conditioning, new electrical wirings, and other needed improvements had all been considered as well. That was nearly five years ago, and still, ground has not been broken for our new stadium. Eisenhower High School is a flagship school here in the district, High School District. When other people visit the school and the stadium for sporting events and other activities, what's the impression that they're getting? More importantly, what's the impression our students are getting? Eisenhower High School needs a new state-of-the-art stadium. The students, parents and supporters of Eisenhower High School deserve that new stadium. I strongly urge the Board to give the people of Rialto a date, the groundbreaking will occur. Item K three on the agenda tonight needs to be approved. Approve Measure Y for our kids, Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keith Bailey. Up next, we have Mrs. Paula Bailey.
Yes, same last name, but no relation, but he is a great teacher, because he was my son's- Yes, same last name, but no relation, but he is a great teacher, because he was my son's psychology teacher some time ago. Good evening, board. I, I'm here again, this is my fourth round for Measure Y. We need to move forward. I've said it over and over, our property, it's not only for our kids, it's for our residents, I understand. There are some residents that may not have children in schools that may not see it as important, I understand the tax increase. But at the same time, their property value is at, at the line. So please, please, we need to make that decision, because if we don't make it now, when do we get to make it, in how many more years? Can we really handle waiting that many more years in order to make the improvements for our students? So, thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Paula Bailey. Up next, we have Mr. Vincent Ressa.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Vincent Ressa, and I teach theater at Eisenhower High School. Now, who I am, and who I am and what I do is not as important as who you are and what you have the power to do. I went, I grew up in Rialto, I went to school at Simpson Elementary. I went to school in Portables, we were prominent structures. The structures weren't constructed until years after I moved on. I also went to Eisenhower High School, there were grumblings at the time that there was going to be a theater. I stand here in front of you today, and there's no theater. I also was blessed to go to Rialto High School, where they had a newly constructed buildings and a theater, but there was a promise that there was going to be a stadium and a pool. The stadium's been built twenty years later, and there's still an empty lot where that pool is supposed to be. Now, I grew up not trusting authoritative figures, because of all the promises that were made and never realized. Now, I don't want to sound downbeat, but I grew up, oh, I do feel very blessed teaching at Eisenhower, surrounded by wonderful teachers and students. And I've been very fortunate to have worked under wonderful principals that have believed in me and my abilities. They have, um, in, in college, the theater students didn't have the opportunity to work in film, and I always wanted to allow my students to do that. And under the wonderful principles, they have believed in me and helped me to upgrade the theater with new seats and curtains, and they've also bought into my film program, and the students have done a wonderful job with that. I'm very proud of what I have accomplished, and what we have accomplished in the very short time that I've been there. But we must do more. In working in college and professional theater and film, there's no bigger skill than working collaboratively to get a job done. We are now in an era of education where we are attempting to prepare our students for college and career. There's no better time than right now to move forward with that bond, to enhance the facilities at Eisenhower and the surrounding schools of our community. A few years ago, Saida had asked me to inform the community of how great, uh, inform the community of the benefits that would, could arise from this acceptance. When it was passed, several people came up to me to congratulate me that a new theater was to be built. I just smiled, because I hoped that this time it would be different. This time, the theater would be built. I understand that things don't always work out as we plan, and I know things have changed since the time Measure Y has passed. But I stand here in front of you today to ask you to do what is right. Construct a facility at Eisenhower that will allow for a true collaboration of the arts with and the core subjects to better prepare our students for college or career. Be remembered for doing what is right for our community. Be remembered for doing what is right for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent Ressa. That concludes public comment. So we'll go ahead and move on to consent, uh, we'll move on to public hearing. That's item D. And the first thing is the Williams Inspection Report, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And the Williams, uh, number two is the Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report Summary for October through December two thousand fourteen. Do we have any, uh, public comment on these, on this public hearing? Then, um, I'd like to ask for a motion, uh, to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, move on to consent calendar items. All items on the consent counter will be enacted in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or interim superintendent for individual action. Um, so with that, can I get a motion to approve, uh, consent counter items, reference E through J?
Move to approve consent calendar items E through J.
Second.
Okay, so it's been, uh, moved and seconded.
And I have discussion.
And, uh, now we'll go on to discussion.
G three and G four.
G three. And G four.
Yeah.
Ms. Walker, did you have some?
It was G four as well.
Uh, do we have any more? Okay, uh, with the exception of item G three and G four, um, I'm gonna call for the vote of all the rest of the items.
Oh, oh.
And then we'll, and then we'll do, uh, G three and G four individually. Um, all in favors? G three and G four will discuss before we vote on them.
Right.
And then K two, did somebody mention K two?
Yeah, that's discussion action, that's the next. So we have to move to approve, uh, E.
E through, E through J, with the exception of G three and G four.
Okay. Second?
Well, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so on, on to G three. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Aye, and all, and, and all the board members in favor also, thank you.
Okay, G three, um, I wanted to know if this, we're being asked to approve a total amount of nine thousand four hundred fifteen dollars or an additional amount of nine thousand four hundred fifteen dollars for this avid, uh, program?
I let Ms. Veronica Smith aside, go to the podium and answer that.
Good evening. Um, actually, it's a total amount. Um, the initial request did not include the training that's required as part of the agreement, so the amount was just increased to include that, so that it would be consistent with board approval for the contract.
Okay, thank you. And then on, uh, G four.
Wait, does anybody else, G three?
Oh.
That's it, okay, go ahead.
Um, well, I was just gonna say, I think the Academy of Young Men will benefit our middle school students, and it will, uh, serve, um, I'm con, the, the middle school students it'll serve, but I am concerned that Title One funds may not be the appropriate funding source for this.
And actually, I'll let Ms. Linda Minor go up to the podium, she actually did call the State Department on this, and and worked with Cory on making sure that we had the correct language, too.
Good afternoon, board members, or good evening, actually, it's going faster than I thought. Um, the question was, is it the, uh,
Is Title One appropriate, appropriate funding source?
This is going to be intervention that he is going to be providing for the students, it's not going to be, um, I know he has done some other things with other districts regarding, um, anti-bullying, attendance, different things like that. But with our program, what he's written, the proposal that he's written for us, is going to address actually intervention, and it will address the, um, the evidence will be the improvement in test scores and also in, uh, GPAs.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Tina Walker.
Could you hold one second, Ms. Minor, uh, Ms. Walker, did you have any questions?
I'm sorry, Ms. Walker. My questions were in reference to having an outside contractor come back in, what were the, the measurable outcomes that they're gonna be providing? Has that been provided, because we didn't get that information in the data that we were sent, about what was the outcome gonna be?
And Cory Jackson is here to.
Yes, so he is here to address the specifics about his proposal and the contract.
Excellent.
Cory Jackson's also a former student board member and graduate from Rialto Schools.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Please don't jump me, all you Eisenhower people in here. Um, particularly for this contract, because it's specifically for Title One funding, uh, this one is smaller in scope, which means is primarily heavily on homework sessions, Saturday schools, to make sure that they're completing their homework assignments and late assignments, as well as getting the tutoring that's necessary that they need to, um, increase their GPA scores. Uh, within the proposal, it also entails that, um, our commitment to all the school districts that we're in is that we will come here every year, probably around April or May, before the school ends, to report back to you, um, on where their GPAs were in the beginning, where they are at the end, and what type of activities we did to make sure that we met those goals.
So my, um, uh, I would like to have that actually written into your contract, that there is a measurable objective, and so that it's written, written, what is the outcome of that? Being that we are using a, a certified professional, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that we have that written in there, um, and then to also include demographics as well, gender and demographics.
That's good.
Yes, not a problem, not a problem.
So Title One funds, the majority, I know the schools that you're looking at are basically Title One schools, so the majority of students by default will probably fall into the Title One category for qualification. Um, but I want to make sure that even if there's a student who's not Title One, that they're identified too. That's gonna be some of the work that you'll have to work with the department on to make sure that they have that, but that's the report I'd like to come back to the board.
Oh, not a problem, we look forward to reporting on, uh, on our results.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, uh, so can we, can we make sure we have that included in, in the, in the contract? Okay. So with that, uh, do we have any more? With that, do we have a motion to approve item G three and G four?
I do have one last thing.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, just in reference to that too, I forgot the last piece, because it was Title One funds that you're going to be using, but I have you also work with the district to find out, does that fall into any of our LCAP strategies as well? So does that fit into any of those categories? Have you looked at that?
Well, they, they do, especially in LCAP, when we talk about, um, underserved populations, especially, um, African-American populations that deal with, um, and foster care populations as well. Uh, for instance, in J Hugh, uh, we will, the main target is actually foster children, because they have a large number of the foster population, so uh, we're working with the principal there to work on the foster, uh, foster care population as well, so there are going to be some cross-pollination as well, uh, when it comes to those numbers. Uh, so we're gonna have, we'll let you know the number of foster care children, um, the different ethnic backgrounds, uh, male, uh, male and female, as well as, um, you know, those who fall into free and reduced lunch, those type of things.
Okay, so if you can include that, just to make sure we include those things too, around how it falls in and supports our LCAP.
Sounds great.
Okay.
And Ms. Walker, what I want to remind you is that all the schools are Title One school-wide, so it's not just the kid is identified, but the school is identified as a Title One school.
Thank you for, um, the le, thank you for the classroom lesson there, Dr. DeSousa.
No, in the olden days, we used to identify kids as Title One kids, but now it's gone all to school-wide, so that's why I just wanted to tell you the difference.
Thank, thank you, thank you, um, did you guys have any more comments?
Nope.
And you're okay with, with Ms. Walker's asking of you guys?
Oh, yeah, looking forward to it.
Okay, good, thank you.
I was just going to add what Mr. DeSousa had stated, because it was previously of some schools, and, and other districts do have that, where some schools are targeted assistance, Title One. But our schools that we service within the district at this point are all school-wide Title One schools, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, what I was just asking is, because I know that they're all district, because we're a Title One district. So I, I do know that, I'm just saying on the demographics, on the individual report, when you do buy student data, if the student is not a free or reduced lunch, even though the school is, you know, the school is a Title One, that that be identified, so if there's a student who's out of that, that's it.
And, and just one, uh, one more thing, I forgot, uh, some of our intervention, uh, specialists are actually gonna be, are here, if they could stand up, please. Uh, these are all graduates within the Rialto School District, uh, so these are, um, the product of this school district, giving back.
Please come up to the podium there, so you, they could see you, you guys, can you stand behind them there at the podium? Oh, the camera could see you guys, former graduate students here.
These are, these are all graduates of the Rialto Unified School District. Uh, who are giving back to make sure that we help the next generation, so, uh, that's something that's particularly unique for this school district, since, uh, we all started off, uh, here, um, as students as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, appreciate it, thank you. So, um, with that, do, did we have a vote for G three and G four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we go on to discussion action items. And we no longer, uh, do these in consent calendar form, so, um, we're gonna go through them individually. Um, the first item, K one, to adopt, to adopt resolution number fourteen dash fifteen dash thirty-four. Two thousand fourteen through two thousand fifteen, California Department of Education Contract for State Preschool Program, number CSP P dash four three nine nine, amendment zero one. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
I'm moving to approve K one.
Second.
Do we have discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. On to number two, uh, K two, to approve an amendment number one to the agreement with legal firm Gutierrez, Fierro, and Erickson to perform a review of the documentation supporting the FIGM report entitled Rialto Unified School District Contract and Purchasing Review. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
First and a second.
But I have discussion.
Okay, so, um, we have a first and a second, uh, go ahead, Ms. O'Kelly.
Well, this is an issue that I've given quite a lot of thought to, because what we're trying to do is hold people accountable here. Uh, certain companies in past years, um, well, I don't know what's the, the word, but fleeced our district of a considerable amount of money. And we're trying to find out exactly what happened, how it happened, and our main purpose is to make sure it never happens again. We have to change board policies, or whatever we have to do, or put policies in place, but we don't know this until we get an in-depth report as to how this happened. Uh, the maximum cost of this, and I have been assured this by Mr. Gutierrez, is, uh, twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And at this point, I definitely think it's a worthy investment, for what we, the valuable information we will, can learn. There's a possibility that we will have legal recourse to go after some of this money and get it back from these people. But without getting the complete report done, we cannot do that. So, uh, I am, uh, hoping that this will all give us the information we need, and we can then move on from here.
I, I, I would just like to, um, uh, share some information. You know, and, and as we move forward, as we move forward, um, here at the district, we want to try to do things a little bit differently, we want to try to be, uh, we want to try some new things. Uh, we definitely want to be more transparent, and, um, and we believe that the district should be an open book. Anybody should be able to come and, and, and ask us questions and, and get answers. One of the things that really's been missing is, uh, more in-depth information on our agenda items. And taking into consideration that members of this community, um, have raised, uh, questions regarding this, this agenda item, and regarding the goal, the goals of the board for this item, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, take liberty upon myself to share some more information with the public as to the purpose of this, uh, uh, legal analysis, which is actually eight goals, not just the one goal to see if there are any monies recoverable. That's only one of the eight goals, so I'll go ahead and share the other seven goals of this legal analysis to better understand the purpose and, and what we're trying to achieve moving forward. The goals of the investigation, uh, the legal analysis, there are multiple goals for this investigation. They include factual discoveries and legal analysis, and they are described as follows. One, ascertain how each contract was negotiated and reviewed administratively and legally prior to presenting it to board for approval. Two, ascertain how the performance of each contract was monitored for compliance and whether the performance complied with contractual requirements. Number three, ascertain how each vendor's invoices were authorized for payment. Number four, determine whether applicable district policies and regulations were followed. Number five, determine whether applicable state statutes were followed. Number six, determine whether each vendor was entitled to the sums paid by the district. Number six, determine whether each vendor was entitled to the sums paid by the district. Number seven, and which is the one that most people, uh, already know, determine whether there are any legal remedies available to district, to the district to recoup any sums improperly paid to any vendor. And last but not least, to, number eight, to determine whether there are any legal rep, determine whether the district policy, any district policy or regulation applicable, app, applicable to any contract with any of these vendors contributed to any problem identified by the FIGMA report and this investigation. So there you have it, folks, that's the whole enchilada. That's exactly what we want to know. So of the eight things that we're looking at, that we're asking legal professionals to look at, one of those, which is whether or not we can recover monies, that's fine. We should, if there's any monies that are recoverable, we should go after it, we should bring it back. But if there, if we can, if there's no, if, if, if it just so happens that the board is at fault, or whatever statute limitations ran out, or whatever reason the money can't be recovered, companies go out of business, or all of a sudden close shop and move out of state, whatever the reason may be, even if there are no monies recoverable, all of the wealth of information that we can learn aside from that, how things happen, why they happened, what policies were in place that were violated, or what policies do we need to make sure this never happens again? All of the other information, I think, as, as, as a member of this, this board, that is well worth the cost, because we don't want this to ever happen again. I don't want this to ever happen again. Um, does anybody else have any more, um, comment or discussion? So with that, um, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, opposed.
Okay, and so, and, uh, Mr. Martinez is not here, so the motion carries three, one. Number three, K three, adopt resolution number fourteen dash fifteen dash thirty-three, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bond, measure Y, series C. Do we have a motion to approve item K three?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And I have discussion.
Okay, Ms. O'Kelly, take it away.
And, and I'd like to thank all the people from Eisenhower for coming, because you're absolutely right. Eisenhower has a history of having money and, and resources promised to that school that get used for something else, or some other place, and I frankly am sick and tired of it, because I've seen it go on for years and years and years. Eisenhower is the flagship school, those kids, and what we're telling those kids, basically, is they, they're not worth what a Carter and Rialto High kids are worth, because we're not giving them the same facilities, and we're not, you know, doing what we're supposed to do for them. Carter and Rialto both have theaters, they both have the new football fields, and here Eisenhower sits, and I'm very tired of it. When I, when Measure Y was being passed, I was principal of Eisenhower High School, I walked that area door to door to talk to the parents, and they were so happy to see the principal out. I can tell you, I, I'm going to brag and say, I think I'm responsible for getting Measure Y passed in Rialto, because that was a very big deal, and I had parent meetings, and we cheered, and we pushed it, because everyone wants this for our kids, and, uh, the fact that it hasn't happened yet breaks my heart. Um, and I made a promise, one of the reasons I ran for the school board was to make sure that Measure Y money was used appropriately, and Eisenhower was slated to have like forty-eight million dollars of that money for the things that were needed to be done at Eisenhower. So as long as I'm on this board, I'm going to fight very, very hard to make sure Eisenhower gets its piece of the pie, and, uh, we bring that school up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Mr. Ayala?
Yeah, I guess it's my turn, and this is not easy, because, uh, you go back to the, the democracy, and sometimes democracy can be a little bit loud, but it is important that we all share our opinions and, uh, our convictions. And going back to when Measure Y was originally adopted, it, it was voted by our citizens of, of Rialto, and the promise to them was that there would be no increase in taxes. And I'm not going to argue the, the fact that we need to help our, our kids, we need to help, uh, staff, we need to improve the facilities, that's not, that's not the argument. The argument is that, are we delivering the promise to the voters? And so we did have some rallies, we had some meetings, but the number of people that attended those, uh, rallies and meetings were, uh, very insignificant in terms of how many residents we have here in Rialto. So, uh, there is a solution, I'm not sitting here to complain, there is a solution. And the solution would be to have a special election, give the voters an opportunity to vote on Measure Y again, whether or not they want to increase their taxes by ten dollars, fifteen dollars. And, you know, you think about the special election, yes, it would cost, cost us from Measure Y perhaps a hundred thousand dollars for that special election.
More like two hundred thousand.
And when you think of the percentage of how much money we're talking about here, we're probably talking neighborhood of sixty-five million dollars, just throwing that out. That's what we have that we will be using in bond money that our residents will have to pay back. And so I was part of that process of, of, of rooting for Measure Y to pass, because I understood the importance and the relevance of it, but, uh, in order for, for myself, so I can sleep good at night, I have to make my point, and you have to be fair to the residents, and I'll say this one more time, a ten dollar bill for some i- is insignificant, they light their cigars with it. Other people, they buy beans and rice, and they feed their family with it. Let, let our residents decide, and then we can all sleep good at night. Thank you.
I'd like to make a point that the reason the taxes are going up is because the state changed the rules on us. That was beyond our control, okay? So we're not breaking our promise, we promised what we could do at that time, and I'm going to be affected, as is everybody in this room, I guess. But I, the best investment we can make is in our kids, and that school needs improvements, and it needs to be up to par with the rest of the schools, in the high schools in the district. So.
Any more comments, discussion? Um, I don't, I noticed we have some of the people here, uh, regarding Measure Y, perhaps you guys can weigh in, give us a, us a short, uh, update and, and synopsis of exactly what we are about to get into or not get into here.
Hello again, my name is Ann Fane Gagny from Delinka Group, I've been here multiple occasions, so it's nice to see everyone again. Um, with me tonight actually is Tim Cardy from Piper Jaffrey, he's the underwriter on, um, this potential series C bond issuance, and also Don Field from Oryc Harrington, um, so if there are any questions on the legal documents, um, that are in front of you, um, then, uh, he would be the one to answer the questions. But for series C, just, uh, to summarize again, um, what we're looking at is a potential tax increase over a twelve-year period, starting in twenty sixteen, um, and we would be able to issue the bonds about thirty-five to thirty-seven million dollars, depending on the interest rates, in the next month or two. So the thirty-seven million, thirty-five to thirty-seven million dollars will be at the district's hands in the month or two, and the tax increase will be seen on the tax bills from the taxpayers in fiscal year two thousand, or school year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and go on for twelve years. At that point, it will go back down to the original rate again, unless you decide to issue series D, which is also authorized under Measure Y, and at that time, we'll have to evaluate the assessed valuation of the district and other factors to see if there will be an additional tax increase. But that is the, the world that we are in today, under measure, or under series C.
Uh, could you, hold just one second, um, I hear a static on the speaker system, um, can we get some technical support over here, please? I- is, is, is this, is the audio, uh, of, is there audio in the other room? Can, can the people in the other room hear what we're?
Put your cell phones on stun or put them away, please.
That's a good idea, thank you very much.
[laughing].
Oh, they can hear? Okay, okay, good, thank you, thank you, please, please continue, um, do we have any questions?
Question. I guess the word is blindsided, and that's how I feel we were treated by the state of California. I know, you know, they, they have important decisions to make on a daily basis, but, uh, originally we had a forty-year loan, a- as I understood, on these bonds, and everything was fine, copacetic would be a good word for it, and then all of a sudden, uh, we were told that, uh, those, uh, those loans would be due in twenty-five years, and that's the blind side, you know? And, um, I, I can just see some folks sitting in their homes saying, Martha, I told you that if we voted for this, they were going to increase our taxes, and here we go again. And what I'm worried about is the future, when we need help again, and we have to issue bonds for, and however we sell it, you know, i- if, if, if the voters aren't listened to, and they're not heard, then it's going to be that much more difficult to convince them to support us next time, because the fact was, there was only two districts that were successful in, 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 in passing bonds. Rialto was one, I don't remember who the other district was, but we, we sold it in, in a downturn in the economy, which was unheard of and unprecedented, but we sold it because we guaranteed them no increase in taxes. So, uh, I'm a Democrat, I'm starting to sound like a Republican, but, uh, this is a nonpartisan position up here, but, uh, I'm speaking out of respect for our community. Thank you.
And I, and I respect the community too, and none of us want to see a tax increase, however, like I said, our, our best resource is our kids, and our biggest, best investment we can make is in our kids, and providing them a, an appropriate learning environment that they have been promised. What about the promises to the teachers and the kids at the school that have been promised upgraded facilities? So it's time to get this done, and I, when I went around about Measure Y before, everybody was so supportive, because people know that Eisenhower needs to be upgraded and fixed up. So I don't think you were going to have people too disgruntled over something that we had no control over, the state made that decision, and we already made promises about things that we were going to do.
Maybe we could hire some more counsel and sue the state over this, uh, this action that they took, that I'm really upset about, and, uh, I think there should have been some clauses where anybody who did get a, uh, approval on a bond at that time, that they would have been grandfathered in.
Yes.
And we would not be in this situation that we're in now.
And, and also, let me clarify too, it's not only because the state changed its rules, it's also because the assessed evaluations of your properties decreased over the first two years after two thousand ten, so.
But they're back up now.
What's that, they're back up, they're, they're significantly more than what we had originally thought. So that will mitigate some of the tax, the original tax increase. In fact, what we had presented to you, uh, back in July, in terms of a tax increase, already today is going to be lower than what we originally projected, because.
We were talking about ten dollars a month, something like that.
No, the total is forty, uh, the average is forty-one dollars a year over a twelve-year period.
So then the forty-one's divided into twelve months.
Exactly.
So we're like five bucks, we have three bucks a month.
Right, but I believe that number, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that number is lower now, because your assessed value for fif- for, that came out in August, when we, which was after we did the numbers in July, is higher.
Yeah, because I just bought a house, I know it's higher.
For all the Marthas out there, please listen right now, uh, if you divide forty-one by twelve, okay?
You get three dollars and twenty cents or something.
Let's just say on, in the best interest of our kids, let's go ahead and, and, and go with it, I don't think this is going to hurt anybody, but, uh, please understand that next time we come to you, uh, we're in, with all sincerity, we do care about your input, we don't want to blindside anybody, but things do happen, and please, uh, Martha's husband, uh, grant us a, a little flexibility here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gagny. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so with that, do we have a motion to, uh, approve? We did that already, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Partly aye.
Four oh.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Um, next up, we're going to item K four, and that's, uh, to approve a ratification of the hourly rate for avid tutors be increased from nine dollars per hour to ten dollars per hour, to be in alignment with our past practice of avid tutors being paid at least a dollar above the minimum wage effective January first, two thousand fifteen. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or actually a discussion?
No, I think that's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four oh.
Yeah, do five. We always get that in closed session.
Yeah. I, I think we still have to, uh, vote on it anyway, though. At least it's on the agenda that way. So just to be safe, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, make a, would, someone like to make a motion to approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel, uh, AHP, for the, uh, case numbers fourteen, fifteen, thirty-four, fourteen, fifteen, thirty-five, fourteen, fifteen, thirty-six, uh, the reinstatement of expulsion, case number thirteen, fourteen, fifty-seven, and the reinstatement hearings, case numbers ten, eleven, seventy-five, EE fourteen, fifteen, five, and EE fourteen, fifteen, four. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, second.
On, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Comments, uh, from our acting superintendent?
Well, I'm not quite used to this, but, uh, Mohammed did not give me any comments to make, so I'll, I'll pass at this time.
Are you sure you wouldn't like to share anything while you have been the current acting superintendent?
I'll keep it short, um, it's been great to be in Rialto, um, I thank you for everyone that's been really super nice to me and, and really make me feel welcome, and I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holderson. Well, next we go to comments from, uh, members of the Board of Education, and, um, we will start with ladies first, um, Ms. Walker, would you like to, uh, give us your board comments or report?
Um, just comments, and I'm going to keep mine to three minute, under three minutes. Uh, I had the pleasure of going to the California School Board Association Conference shortly at, a day or two after the, um, first board meeting that I, when I was sworn in, and learned a lot of information, so I'm very pleased that I was allowed, um, the privilege of going with my colleagues and meeting other colleagues across the state, uh, who represent school districts very similar to ours. Uh, learned a lot of information, way more information to learn, um, over these next four years, um, and so just, it was exciting. One of the things that I did learn, and I brought back, uh, they have this fair, right? You know, exhibit fair, and you, they have all these games where you can win things, so that, you know, there are vendors that you want to, they want to, board members to come and bring that back to your board. Well, I was hungry, and they had this big spinning wheel, and it had this big spinning wheel with candy, chocolate, Snickers, Paydays, all kinds of stuff, uh, on it, and I was thinking, all I have to do is play, and the odds of me getting a candy bar are like really high, right? So I go over there to go play, and I spin the wheel, and it's going around, and my God, it did not land on one of those ninety-eight candy bars, it landed on the grand prize, which was a student emergency kit. This is, is Derek still here? I am supposed to deliver this to my risk management person. Uh, and it's actually for a student, so it is in your hands now to deliver to a worthy young person in our district. Uh, you're right, there you go. There you go! And I went away without my chocolate fix, but...
You've just approved the wellness policy tonight.
Oh, there we go! So, with that said...
Chocolate is healthy.
There you go, in moderation. But back to, the purpose of the conference was to get information, to bring your information back to the district, to help to support the work that we're doing here in the district. And so, it was great, that we had a great opportunity. And Mr. Ayala and I, we sat in on one of the main sessions, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, 'cause you actually have the book, about little things that we can bring back immediately to help our district improve the morale and begin to working with our families. And so, we wanna bring, make sure that we, as we, we're not one of those, what's called a sit and get, and I'm an educator as well, so I know about going to conference, you get all the information, but you don't do anything with it. That we are very much, as we learn, come back to our district and implement or share information so that we can be better and do better. And to say that, and I'd like to say to Classified Association, if I in any way, in my comments, felt that, said that, I felt that you were unprofessional, one of the things about last meeting was, it was a big meeting that lasted into the wee hours of the morn. And you get weary and everything, and if you don't know the history of who I am, Dina Walker, I'm actually an educator, but a parent and community advocate. And I have advocated for the last ten, twelve, twelve years for rights for parents and communities to be engaged in educational practice and that they be treated fairly and have access. And so, for me, that, when I felt a parent could not get what their, you know, their message across to our board, that hit very much close to home. And not knowing the room, because that was my first day, and I just got sworn in, and I was still high, right? I don't know who's in the room, I didn't know what we had, and luckily, after that meeting, I was able to talk with our superintendent, a couple of the people in the district, to find out, you know, we did have our staff here and everything, but we as a district need to do a better job as well at providing an environment that everybody is heard and everybody is respected. And they have their own platforms and opportunities to express themselves and to do the best job that they can in that environment. And so, I as a board member will commit and commend you for addressing it, allowing me to say that, to be here, and then to work in partnership to make sure that our governance and our direction is adequate for the staff to go out and implement, and so that we don't have or run into that situation again. Because on the outside, in that day, I was still an outsider. On that, on the outside, we're seeing what's going on. That was, that was what I had come to. I'm now an insider officially, and so, we will work to make sure that we're better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Would you like to go next, Mr. Ayala?
Why not? Okay, a lot to talk about, but we'll keep it under three minutes, do the best we can. I was up there at the CSBA conference also with Dina in San Francisco, and I have a book before me, it says, "The Smartest Kids in the World," okay? And this was the keynote speaker that addressed over eleven hundred school districts. So, you can imagine how many people were in attendance. And I walked away there with an eye-opener. But to be all fair, before I get into just a few comments here, school districts have had their hands tied because we have had to achieve with API and AYP scores. We've had to meet this mark in order to get our funding and not find ourselves in program improvement. So, we were desperate trying to find ways to get those scores up. And I'm sad to announce that a lot of districts, they put kids in classrooms to take, for example, Algebra I, who weren't ready, but they got a hundred points for the API, for just taking the class, whether the kids were successful or not. But who paid that price? You know who paid that price. When a person goes into a venture and they feel unsuccessful, they don't feel competitive, do you think they wanna do it again? Not likely. And this is the case here, this was a tragedy. So, what they have found through research, places like Finland and Poland, they don't ask their kids to take courses like, gatekeeper courses like Algebra I, until they're ready. You put those kids in there before they're ready and they fail, then what's their chances that they're going to learn it the second time around? Because these gatekeeper courses require building blocks. They require learn to walk before you run. And if you push somebody too fast, it's like throwing somebody in the ocean. Without proper training, it's a hit or miss deal. We don't wanna do that to our kids. We wanna bring balance, and it's not easy. That's why we have great staff on board here. We gotta meet these requirements, yet at the same time, we wanna launch forward. Now, let me ask you another question. Because, you know, there's a lot of important decisions coming up. How much would we pay somebody like Bill Gates to be our superintendent? There are people out there would say, "He don't deserve any more than the minimum wage." Yet, there are people out there who can maybe cure cancer also. How much are they worth? We need to think about what we want for our community and rally together our resources and bring somebody here can make a difference, not only for staff, but for our kids and this community. So, keep that in mind, thank you for the opportunity to share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Joyala. Next, I'd like to ask our student board member, Marisol. Would you like to give your board report?
Well, good evening, everyone, I hope you all have a happy new year. I hope you all had an amazing break. I slept in a lot. Wow, I don't really have anything to report. Thank you, I hope you all have an amazing rest of the week. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna cut you some slack, 'cause we know that you guys barely started school again this week, and that three-week vacation was pretty nice.
It was good.
Yeah. Next on, to our board vice president, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, first of all, thank you all for coming tonight. It was great to see my buddies from Eisenhower here, fighting for our cause, so thank you for showing up. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. I did, it was very busy, and as it usually is, and by the end of it, you're exhausted, but now we're back to regular routine. And I feel that 2015 promises to be a great year. I'm very excited about the new year and moving forward and doing, doing a lot of things with my coworkers here on the school board. I did attend Eisenhower's Christmas concert, which was truly spectacular. They have to hold it at Carter High School, because we have no theater or auditorium at Eisenhower. And Carter's holds, what, Mr. Schessler, seven hundred?
About seven fifty.
About seven hundred fifty. And it was standing room only, and some people had to double up in seats because everybody's supposed to be seated. But it was packed, and it was well worth it. It was, it was a spectacular event. And I have to say, I'm very, very excited that we're gonna move forward with the Measure Y series, bond series, and start getting some things done in this district that have needed to be done for a long time. So, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Last but not least, that leaves me. And first of all, I'd like to welcome all our parents and our students back to school and our staff members, 'cause I know a lot of staff members enjoyed the time off. Some people here at the district office still had to work, but for everyone that had, you know, a little vacation time, holiday time off, it was really nice. I personally probably came back twenty pounds heavier, but I can't resist all the good home-cooked food.
Too many tamales.
Yeah, tamales and ham and everything else. But welcome, welcome back. Hope everybody had wonderful holidays and time off. I just wanted to mention that December twentieth, I was, I had the pleasure of joining a parent, Special Education Parent Support Group, named Padres Unidos, from St. Catherine's Church here in Rialto, parent support group that advocates for and helps and supports each other with parents that have children in special education here in Rialto. They held the Christmas celebration on the twentieth there at St. Catherine's Church, and Mr. Ayala and myself were both able to attend. And I wanna thank Mrs. Salaya and Mrs. Reese and all the parents over from the Padres Unidos Parent Support Group for hosting a really, a really wonderful, beautiful celebration for special education kids. Boy, I tell you, as soon as that DJ music came on and those kids started dancing, I felt like I was in a club, I was like, wow! Some of these kids can really dance, really dance. It was really joy, it was really, really joy for us to see the kids dancing, enjoying the music. Some of those guys got moves, man, I looked at Ayala and said, "Can we do that? Those kids get down." So, it was just heartwarming to see twenty, thirty kids all dancing, all at the same time, all in their own way, having fun. And of course, they had piñatas for them, and they gave, they had a Santa Claus, they gave gifts and whatnot, and they had food, and it was a really nice event. The parents fundraised it for it themselves, and it benefits our students, our special education students in the district and their parents. I just wanna thank them for extending their invitation to the board. And thank you, Mr. Ayala, for joining in that. The other thing I wanted to say, you know, regarding the, regarding the FICMAT review analysis, we gotta remember that the FICMAT analysis for contracts and purchasing policies and procedures was a very small, narrow, more of a targeted, specific type of audit. It would have been nice to have done a thorough review, but we couldn't get that at the time, so, you know, with the lemons that we had, we had to make lemonade and at least get a small one. For those who know, I had been pushing for, I had been advocating for an audit of that type for years, probably since the first year I got elected here. But we weren't able to get an in-depth review for that type of audit. But what we did get was enough for us to realize that there are serious problems with the practices here at the district in regards to that. And now, what we need to do is, we wanna move on, but we don't wanna sweep things under the rug. If people need, if there's people that still need to be held accountable, we're going to do that. If there's people who don't want information to come out or come forward, the attorneys have to interview people, attorneys have to look at documentation, attorneys have to work with FICMAT to see what it is they all discovered. Aside from the report that's available online, they gotta speak to the people. We can't do that. And I understand and I appreciate the community's concern. You know, unfortunately, the board has to decide who they want to do this, to do this assignment. We have a number of attorneys that have worked with the district before, that are currently working with the district, but we can't, we can't have everybody do everything, you know? So, I hope that the information I shared tonight will help give a better picture of exactly what it is we're hoping will be done and accomplished. And I have a good feeling that at the end of this report, when this assignment is completed, we will be better knowledge and understanding exactly how things happened, how they were able to happen, and what we can do to prevent it from ever happening again.
Can I make a point?
Yeah.
Another thing is, I think it's a crucial point. We had maybe assumed or thought that the district attorney would be acting on this report because it was recommended to the district attorney that they act on this report. They have, to date, we have not heard from them, nothing has been done, and we just feel it's our responsibility to try to find out as much as we can about this entire period of time and the things that happened during that period of time. And hopefully, maybe a year, two years down the line, the district attorney will have the time to pick up the case and really delve deep, but we don't know. But in the meantime, we have questions, and we want to be a responsible board, and we have to know what happened that shouldn't have happened, so that's why we're doing this.
And I believe somebody mentioned, it's not gonna cost a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand.
Twenty-three thousand, five hundred.
Yeah, not to exceed. So, the amount of hours is not to exceed ninety-eight hours, but, you know, we'll see how that goes, and hopefully, we'll be able to share some of the findings with the public. As long as it's within our obligations to not share confidential personnel matters. But generalizations and things that we can learn from, policies we can implement moving forward, I think the community has a right to know. With that, I just wanna say, Mr. Martinez is feeling under the weather tonight, so for those of you that speak with him, maybe you can give him a call or shoot him an email, hope he feels better. And Mr. Islam actually is out of the district, family emergency. His mother became greatly sick, and unfortunately, it's what's sad news that I report that it has been brought to the attention of the board, that his mother just recently passed away. So, he will be returning in a few days, and if you just keep him and his family in your prayers, or if you'd like to, you know, give him a call, you're more than welcome to do so. There was another... I have another announcement as well. Tonight, the Board of Education would like to end our school board meeting with a moment of silence, not only for Mr. Islam's mother, but also Mr. Frank Fox's daughter, Anne Marie Fox. Mr. Fox is a lead custodian in our Maintenance and Operations Department. His daughter, Anne Marie, who passed away at the age of twenty-nine in her sleep on December thirty-first, 2014. She is the sister of Frank Fox III, who is also a custodian in our district. And a celebration of life for Mrs. Anne Marie Fox will be held this Saturday, January tenth, at eleven AM at the Cucamonga Christian Fellowship. For those who would like to attend, to support, and please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, so with that, do I hear a motion? Would we like our student board member to motion to adjourn this meeting?
We can adjourn, we're going back to closed session.
Well, we gotta close open before we go back in the, in the close.
No, I thought we just moved to go to close, and we closed the meeting. Yeah, adjourn when we come out.
Okay, sounds good, so maybe next time. At this time, we will be going back into closed session. Good night. Good night.
You gotta have a bath to read these books.
Practice? All right. Okay, and, uh, it's ten oh-two. And we will can wrap up our closed session meeting. The Board of Education has taken action to hire leadership associates, for our, to conduct, to help our district conduct the superintendent, uh, search. So, um, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.